Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I'm going to mute my own speakers. Thank you, and we're going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works, February 6, 2024. All council members are in attendance for this meeting. We have nine items on the agenda, and we are going to start with item number two and circle back to item number one when the appropriate folks have arrived. So item number two on our agenda is ordinance amending Redmond Municipal Code chapters and titles 15.08, the building code 15.23, electrical code 15.18, energy code 15.26, wildland urban interface. And here to introduce the item, we have Deputy Director Jason Lynch with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to kind of do a little run back. We recently are coming back to you again. We previously had come to you on 5/23 and then on 6/6 of 23. State Building Code Council was delayed two separate times for going back and forth with the energy code that was being adopted. They have come to resolution. They are proposing for a code update implementation of March 15 of 2024, which is kind of an out-of-cycle related to the codes. Generally, the codes adopt every three years. We're going to be moving forward with that code adoption here shortly. Secondly, the electrical code is also following that code adoption, which will be adopting April 1 of 2024. That's in compliance with RCW 19.27.01, which is the State Building Code Council. Upon that adoption, we would be amending this ordinance to move forward and adopt those current codes. That would be our building code. Also wanted to mention that we did add Appendix T, which is the Sustainable Committee of the Whole Meeting that discussed about the solar-ready provisions. Those were being updated into this code cycle as well. We will be coming to you on February 20, 2024, and we are requesting that to be on consent.
Great. Thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the council? Council President Kritzer.
Well, I was in support of this the last time that we saw it, so it was ready for us to adopt it, and I'm excited about some of these code changes. I'm curious, because I know there was still some discussion, part of the reason why it got delayed, and just curious if anything changed in terms of the state building codes.
So are you referring to the date of the energy code adoption, or the date has changed to the 15th of March, which will be that adoption?
No, the actual code change.
Oh, the actual code. So they have resolved those issues, and they've published those documentations. We've not actually seen any additional code changes beyond what the state has approved. They will submit those in their entirety. They will have a first printing edition and then a second printing edition that will come out. But they have had a mutual consensus of approving as the code was written, so they've not amended that section.
Great. And my understanding is that some other cities have gone ahead and adopted similar code changes, but within their own city. For example, the city of Seattle recently adopted some standards for their building emissions. And I'm curious if you could just share with us briefly if there's a large difference between what, for example, was adopted in Seattle versus what's going to now be at the state standard.
So Seattle is very unique. DCLU Seattle actually adopts their own code. They don't take the adopted building code. They actually write their own code. So it is completely different from what is adopted, what you would see like in Kirkland, Samamish, Isaguas. So we're adopting the state building code to show consistency within the East Side Consortium. Seattle writes the code very uniquely to some of the nonconformities that they have with the proximity of high-rise structures. So their code is unique to Seattle.
Thank you. I would be interested in the future to be able to see a little bit of some of the potential differences between those codes and what we're adopting, just to note in terms of the impacts, especially on carbon reduction and emissions.
We'd be happy to provide that.
Great. Thank you, and I'm supportive of adding this to the consent agenda.
Other questions from the council? Okay, I'll go ahead and hop in with a couple. Mr. Lynch, I think what Councilmember Kritzer was maybe angling questions towards is, could you remind us of the headlines of the energy building code? Because we have a community that's really interested in this topic and often will come to us asking for these things, and we're obviously going to be in alignment with what they're doing. So in this package that's being adopted, what are like the one or two major changes that we're welcoming into the code?
So if we may all have Travis Sally, who did a lot of this research for us, step up and kind of answer that question for us.
Welcome. Come on up.
So a few of the changes that were and were being discussed and why it was delayed. One of them was related to ban on natural gases. So that's actually not moving forward. And so what's happening is, right now, there is a push to stay with all-electric. And so that's the path that they went with. So there was the, if you remember, the city of Berkeley that was going against it with restaurants, and so the state has moved forward. We are sticking with electric. There are some wording changes that are happening, quite honestly. It's not changing the code. There's some restructuring, and it has not been released at this time. So there's the commercial energy code, residential energy code. What we were doing here is just trying to get a little bit ahead with you. So by the time the state finally releases that final document, that first printing, then we should be able to provide those exact final clerical administrative rewordings that they've done.
Great. I appreciate that, Mr. Sally. Thanks so much. So council, do we have any objections to seeing that final content coming to us for consent on the 20th? Seeing none, I think we'll see this one go through. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys being here. We're going to move on to item number three on the agenda, which is also with planning and community development. We're going to talk about the adoption of a resolution approving the allocation of $955,200 to a regional coalition for housing, otherwise known as ARCH, for the development of affordable housing. And with us, we have Deputy Directors Sarah Fee Allen and Ian Lefkort. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, mayor and council member, or just council members. The next item is adoption of the resolution approving the allocation of $955,200 to a regional coalition for housing, also known as ARCH, for the development of affordable housing. This item supports the important affordable housing efforts of the city and our East King County community. To provide further details, I will turn the mic over to Ian Lefkort.
Thank you, Sarah Fee. Hello, my name is Ian Lefkort. I use him pronouns. I'm the senior planner in long-range planning, and this is the annual housing trust fund process. This is where all the member jurisdictions go through a process, including a community advisory board of receiving funding requests for projects, reviewing them. The CIB then provides that upstream to the ARCH Executive Board, of which Director Helen is, of course, appointed. And then the allocations are prioritized, and that's the end result of the budget impacts before you today. The request to Redmond is that $955,000. It's also important to note that in the packet, it shows that Redmond is just going above and beyond with individual contributions for an additional 2.1 million. That is distinct from the housing trust fund. That is monies we've already set aside for affordable housing outcomes. The money total will fund two projects fully and three projects partially. The funds will then support about 840 affordable units. And notably for this round of the HTF, two of the projects are actually within Redmond City limits. As a reminder, ARCH is a collaboration, so we kind of take turns where the projects go. Pooling the money yields outcomes better than the sum of the parts. The ASST committee is to place this item on the February 20 consent. Any questions?
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Lefkort. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Kritzer.
Thank you very much for the information. I appreciate the memo from ARCH as well with all the detailed information, and great to see a lot of funding for Redmond projects in this. One comment is that the Bellwether project seems like a really big deal, and just a comment for later is that it would be great for us to get a deeper briefing on that project, a $167 million project going on in our city with both commercial and housing options just seems like a pretty big deal. So were you going to say something?
Well, that was just so well timed, because I had written a note to say that Bellwether would like, wanted me to pass along that this Thursday at 6:30 at the Aloft Hotel across from the site where it will be, they're going to be doing an open house, and the open house will focus on explaining the general development program and its income restrictions, and will also include conversations about the community partners that they're involving as well. In addition to this open house, I think they would be more than happy to come and talk to the council about the project or meet with you individually.
Great, and I can follow up on that. So two quick questions. One is for the Emma McRedmond project. Will residents be displaced during renovations, or is there already a plan for where residents? Because it seems like a big renovation.
The initial understanding I have is that it will be phased, so it should have a minimal impact, but my understanding of that is from a year and a half ago, so I'll need to follow up and get the latest details for you.
Great, yeah, it'd just be great to make sure to message residents on that. And then I am interested to see how we're doing a match of our own funding. I haven't seen that in the past on these types of ARCH proposals from other cities and don't see other cities that kind of are bringing that to the table. So just curious if you can speak to that a little bit. Great, great that we're putting in our own funding and that it's getting noticed on here, but I don't see that on the other cities' projects, so just curious about that, if it was a way to incentivize getting ours to the top.
I was going to say, I think Redmond is very dedicated to affordable housing, and we encourage our other cities to do the same.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Salahuddin.
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing this. I just had a quick question on the proposed funding sources, and it might be, you know, because I'm new and this might have already been discussed in the past, but just looking at, you know, how much each city is contributing particularly, you know, for 2023 funding, is there sort of a method or an algorithm that you use to make each city, you know, run its course on when Redmond is paying potentially $955,000 and getting two projects this year, and then next year it would be a little bit different? Do you have sort of a breakdown of that?
That's a great question. So the high level is, it is roughly based on population. There are some quirks to it. For example, if jurisdictions are below a certain threshold of population, then they kind of have a flat rate. In certain jurisdictions, typically the big three pay, can pay a little bit more, but overall, it is broadly population-based. Now, in terms of where the projects go, that really is at the opportunities presented from the applicants, right? We are not actually constructing the housing. We're just funding the applicants who come to us. Thank you.
Okay, I'll jump in with a couple of my comments. I think, much like Deputy Director Allen mentioned, I was really inspired by the way that Redmond is showing up here. This is one of my favorite meetings every year that we get to do. This is just a really nice one. But I do want to call out specifically for the city of Redmond, one of the tools that we are utilizing here is that $10 million set aside that we had in our budget this past year, and we chose to make that, and I hope that is an inspiration to other cities to make things like this come to light. I do have a request coming up. It would be great. We had a $10 million allocation in our budget for affordable housing, given that these ones are going to be slated for consent on the 20th. Then how's the balance of those funding, of that funding looking? Of course, that's a fund that I would want to make sure we're spending every penny on. So would appreciate a look from that in the future from the staff.
Can do.
Perfect. Any objections to this item going to consent on the 20th of February? Okay, thanks, team. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to transition now to our public works items. So item number four on our agenda is approval of the Redmond Technology Station operations and maintenance agreement. Here with us to introduce the item, we have Director Burt. Welcome.
Good afternoon. It's great to be here. Thank you. First thing on the agenda, as we have quite a few today for public works, is the approval of the operating agreement for the Redmond Technology Station. Essentially, what this operating agreement does for us, it defines the roles and responsibilities between the city of Redmond and Sound Transit moving forward. Elements covered under the agreement deal with the direct access ramp to the technology station and also the pedestrian bridge, and components of the Northeast 40th Street stormwater quality facility. Essentially, the city will be operating and maintaining the structure, the bridge unto itself, and the foundations of both the bridge and the direct access ramp. And one of the main things that's called out in that is that we will be doing inspections of the bridge every 24 months on a regular cycle. Sound Transit is not responsible for maintaining any portion of the pedestrian bridge or the direct access ramp. That falls on us. And just to note, the pedestrian bridge will be open 24 hours, seven days a week, for the public's use, but access to the Redmond Technology Station through the direct access ramp is generally going to be closed from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM each day. So it's important to note that. This agreement, essentially, if we pass it on consent, it will take effect once Microsoft has finished their portion of the RTS bridge and deeds the bridge over to the city. So that will be sometime later this spring as well. And then our operating costs in terms of inspections and support to any maintenance issues have already been built into the public works baseline budget in our maintenance operation center. Pending your questions, we're looking for this to go to consent on the 20th.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there questions from the council? Okay, any objections to seeing this one go to consent on February 20th? Awesome. Thank you, Director Burt, and thanks for including the very colorful map. It was awesome to have in this packet.
You bet.
Yeah. Item number five, we're going to stick with public works for a while. Item number five is the approval of the final contract with Harbor Pacific Contractors in the amount of $9,104,63, and accept construction for the wastewater pump station 13 replacement project. So again, this is the next couple of items that kind of do two things, because we're talking about the contract and acceptance of the project. Director Burt.
Absolutely. So this is, this was an extremely complicated project that the diligent staff within the Capitol Division were able to work through the technical aspects of this project and deliver this project under budget, which is great. What the pump station does is it provides the capacity in dealing with the future growth in the Marymore subarea neighborhood. Essentially, what it does, it improves the safety, reliability, and capacity of our wastewater system to pump waste out of that rapidly growing area. It replaced a aging wastewater pump station there, and, you know, this is an investment that will last a generation or more for the city moving forward. Do you want to call out that the original total project cost on this was about $13.7 million? The full cost that we've realized with staff and construction ended up being only about $11.9 million, so we'll be returning about $1.7 million to the wastewater CIP. And then the actual construction contract unto itself, we had a savings of about $387,000, which was great, even with the technical difficulties that we faced. So asking for the acceptance of this project and move it to consent on the 20th.
Wonderful. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina and then Councilmember Salahuddin.
Thank you, Director Burt. Question around, because so many times we're hearing about things going over budget, especially when around dealing with building materials. How were we able to come under budget?
So this, Councilmember, this project was originally, it's part of a larger programmatic replacement project that we have going, where we're replacing many of our pump stations throughout the community. This was an opportunity that, based on standardization of the pumps that we're putting in, we were able to forecast the costs out and secure some of those materials early. When it went to construction, it was before COVID, so many of these construction contracts and to the subcontractors were already locked in, so it didn't impact us. But we did have issues at this site, dealing with the high-water table, subcontractors really not knowing how to handle that. So there's been some technical issues, but we still came under budget on this one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
Yeah, thank you so much. Not a question, just a brief comment. Thank you so much for getting this done under budget. It's the neighborhood I live in, and I really appreciate, you know, the level to looking in the future for especially the entire Marymore Village, so thank you.
Well, your toilets were flush.
Perfect.
Which is good. And Mike Haley from our Capitol Division was instrumental in working this through. So the thanks goes to him and the Capitol team for being diligent on this one.
Thank you. Councilmember Forsyth and then Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. So I love when these projects get done, and I know that we have several of these, and I have lost track of how many are left to complete. Can you update us real quickly on how many are left to update?
Six.
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 Okay, and that was out of nine, if I recall? Or 12?
Nine is correct.
Nine, okay. Go with the first one. Thank you.
I'd have phoned a friend on that one.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I wish I had a friend to call when I need him, but I'm glad that you do. Hey, I remember when we talked about this and when we talked about leveraging these projects, and I expressed my appreciation to you at the time, and now I have a further request. I asked our Director of Finance, when we're putting together the Committee of the Whole Finance Plan, to look into and provide some insight for council on our procurement process or procurement process improvements. What I request, or what I would like to see happen, is that you work with the Director of Finance and do sort of a debrief, lessons learned, and take those things that we've learned on these successful projects and try and extrapolate or disseminate that education to other parts of our Capitol and overall our entire procurement process. So is that something that you think you and Kelly could work on?
Absolutely, Councilmember, and part of the success of this program is that council had made the decision to lump the replacement of these projects into a programmatic focus. So that gives us some leverage going into it, that we're able to forecast and set a standard for equipment and design standards on these projects as we move forward. So when we're able to do things programmatically, it does give us that opportunity to leverage early procurement, to be able to take advantage of cost savings. But Director Cochran and I will definitely talk about that and be happy to bring something back on lessons learned to the council.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson? No, I thought I saw your hand. That's okay. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Director Burt, I've got a question that I'm not even sure is appropriate, but I know that this would be the appropriate time to ask.
Sure.
Because this was projected before COVID, and in the last few years, we've been seeing, of course, a shift in our weather patterns and getting a little bit colder. Does additional cold weather snaps or prolonged cold weather snaps impact this at all, and would it change anything that's already been projected?
No. These facilities are designed to certain thresholds to mitigate for cold. Pipes are insulated, the facilities are heated, so cold weather snaps are not designed to freeze the effluent that comes into these pump stations. So we're well positioned to deal with the cold.
Thank you.
You bet.
Wonderful. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on February 20th? Great, we'll have this one on for February 20th. Item number six in our agenda is approval of the final contract with NPM Construction in the amount of $314,522, and accept the construction for the three rapid rectangular flashing beacon crosswalk project. Director Burt.
Yes, another aspect of cost savings this time, it was $21,000, but I'll take the money where I can find it. This is our continued effort to create safe crosswalks for pedestrians in and around the greater Redmond area. These are those rapid flashing beacons. You hit the button, lights flash up on both sides, gives that visibility for pedestrians crossing streets. This was three projects that we put in, one at Northeast 116th and 159th, Bear Creek Parkway and 159th Place Northeast, and the final one was at 180th Northeast and Northeast 70th Street. Our intent here this year and into the next biennium is to continue, basically, we find cost savings when we can bundle these, because these can't be individual projects. Contractors just won't take it. So we'd be looking to bundle three to four projects at a time moving forward.
Wonderful. That was my question, actually, so I appreciate you addressing that.
You bet.
Are there other questions from the council? Okay, Council President Kritzer.
I'll just say, I know, I think we've had discussions on this quite a few times during budget processes, and we've been a little surprised on the price tag to put in a crosswalk, but I know it has a lot of infrastructure there, and I do know that I hear from community whenever one of these goes in about how excited they are to have more visibility and to feel safer crossing our crosswalks. So just want to say thanks to the staff that worked on this, and I think these are great investments towards our Vision Zero goals.
I totally agree with that, and you are correct. There's that aspect where we place these, right? You've got to have a power source, you've got to dig, you've got to purchase the equipment, and then it takes time to install on aspects of design, but it's well worth the payoff. Yep.
Wonderful. Any objections to this item going to consent? Okay, we're going to accept a lot of great projects on February 20th. Thank you. The next one of this nature is item number seven, to approve final contract with the Wastewater Construction Company and accept construction in the amount of $1,286,240 for the Redmond Way East Lake Samamish Parkway, 180th Avenue Northeast intersection improvements. We really need a new, like, moniker for this. This is just the intersection that we talk about a lot.
Yes.
But anyway, Director Burt.
Yes, once again, asking for acceptance of this, and another good news story, total budget for this was about 2.1 million, and total cost that we were able to bring in on this was at 1.9 for about a savings of $141,000. This project was designed for safety and capacity enhancements at the intersection, as well as helping to mitigate additional traffic generated with the growth in downtown in Marymore. The intersection improvements include new vehicle capacity, signal timing, revised pedestrian crossings, and new bike lanes through the area. It's not perfect, but it's definitely an improvement of what we had previously. So looking for acceptance and to take this to consent on the 20th.
And I'm looking for her, and there she is, Council Vice President Forsyth. Why don't you kick us off?
Thank you. Yes, I love that you just opened me up for my comment and the comment that I've been hearing from community members of the, it's not perfect. I've heard a lot of people complaining to me and concerned about the slip lane onto East Lake Samamish and how cars are driving into that bike lane and using that as that extra width so they can actually take that turn faster. So I'm looking to you for maybe some suggestions, maybe some of that savings. We can put some flex posts up to get people to calm traffic and slow down a bit, but overall, huge improvement, happy to accept it, but just looking for some more improvements for that bike lane there and some safety in slowing the traffic down.
I'll have our traffic operations and safety engineering staff take a look at that, and we can come back with some options for the council.
That would be great. And yeah, all you have to do is just pop out there at like 5 o'clock, and you'll see it happening.
Roger.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Okay, any objections to this item going to consent on the 20th? All right, we'll go ahead and bundle this in then. Thanks, Director Burt. Switching gears, but sticking with public works, we have item number eight, which is the adoption of an ordinance establishing apprenticeship requirements for city-funded public works contracts of $1 million or more.
Great, thank you. This ordinance adds a new chapter to the Redmond Municipal Code, which will require the use of apprentice labor as a percentage of overall public works contracts that we have, which exceed $1 million. The provisions within the ordinance align with initiatives from the state of Washington, which is seeking to expand the use of apprentice labor and provide a mechanism for encouraging such labor on local projects, public works projects, and it also provides an aspect for reporting mechan- And it also provides an aspect for reporting mechanism within the code. I do want to point out, it states $1 million. The provisions on this is the let construction contract. So, we may have a project that is $1.5 million, half a million dollars is overhead cost, design and so forth. The million dollar threshold is actually on the contract that goes out to bid, that we'd be looking at that. The ordinance also calls for, it provides for the provisions for the validation of use of apprentice labor, which puts the threshold at 15% of total hours given to a project should be apprentice labor. And then it also provides for the mechanism in which contractors would report to the city and also through Labor and Industries. There is a provision within the ordinance as well that provides for a waiver if apprentice labor is not available. There are certain industries and subcontractors out there that just don't have or access, don't have or access to apprentice labor here in the Puget Sound region. So, we do need to be able to provide a waiver for that. And one of the things in, as we were discussing this and I've talked to some fellow cities about this, is that contractors are still going through a process of implementation challenges as they began to adopt, or I should say adapt, to this provision. There's a lot of trades out there, the trades are hurting, this is designed to encourage apprentice labor, but we also recognize that every trade that we may need on a project may not have that 15% threshold. So, we need to provide a provision in which we can provide a waiver on that. But we're super excited about this. You know, we have quite a few projects that will let at over a million dollars, so we are expecting to see use of this ordinance moving forward.
Thank you, Director Burke. Questions from the council? I actually see Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I am so excited to see this brought up. This is one of my major policy ideas that I wanted to bring forward and really excited to see this here. I know, Director Burke, I believe you and I talked about the possibility of this being lowered to a half a million dollar contract. I'm interested if you could just talk about why we stuck with the million dollars. I know there's reasons around both, but I know the workforce, labor shortage and making sure that we're training people up is something that we're really passionate about in this city. And I'm also interested if you could talk about, are there any fees associated with the waiver or anything associated with that waiver as far as making sure that people don't abuse that part of it?
Originally, the state provision for this use of apprentice labor was $2 million and we actually, there was going to be a sliding scale on the implementation. I think bringing it down to a million dollar requirement, I want to say in '25 or '26. So, we're actually ahead of the game in terms of the state requirement stating for a million dollars. And Councilmember, I may be having a senior moment, I turned 51, I don't remember that conversation with you, but I'm happy to explore that a bit further as this moves forward. What I would ask right now is that we give this an opportunity to mature and see what kind of responses that we're getting on these contracts moving forward. And if it does look like that the apprentice labor is available and we're meeting these thresholds, then it's definitely something I believe we can bring back to council for an amendment to drop that threshold in the future.
Okay, I'm not certain, maybe I had that conversation with the mayor about that half a million dollar threshold. I'm interested to hear the rest of the conversation before I comment further. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. This looks like one of those, enough of a complexity and perhaps some people would have anticipated when the government does these kinds of things with our private sector, the fear of unintended consequences or things that we hoped. We look for the positive things, but then there are those that say, yeah, that's great, but this is gonna happen as well. Do you, in your discussions and in your involvement with the state and jurisdictions and others in the industry, did you come across any of those things that we should be made aware of?
The feedback that I've been able to gather, working through the Association of Washington Cities and other jurisdictions and even the construction industry, is people want this because they understand that there is a labor shortage and any way that we can encourage the use of apprentice labor, they're supportive of it. The labor rates for apprentice are set by the state for prevailing wage within a given area. This is a benefit actually for contractors that they're able to use some aspects of a reduced labor rate as part of their project, which in a way sometimes also allows for other aspects of profit. But they know the construction industry and what we've heard is that they realize that they will be facing a labor crunch. And any way that artificially we can encourage the use of this labor ends up being a long-term benefit to them because they're getting people in the door, in the trades, trained, and it just has second and third order effects in a positive manner. So, we're hearing nothing but support on this.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I had hoped that that would be the answer. I just wanted to be certain of anything that you are aware of, that we are aware of. It is sort of ironic that we're going back to something that has existed for, you know, hundreds of thousands of years actually and trying to embellish it and encourage it, but the whole concept of apprentices has been around for many, many, many millennia. But, thank you.
And previously, they were free, so at least this gives a wage, so that's good.
Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I would say, you know, the way that I see it also is that we, as a city, we do projects where there's a lot of opportunity for us to be able to create these spaces for people to get experience and be able to get into the industry who are doing training and need to be able to access some of these apprenticeships. So, it's kind of using our purchasing power and the fact that we're this big entity, the same way that we kind of look at, for example, contracting with women or minority-owned businesses in our contracting as well to say, you know, if we're doing these millions of dollar projects, let's use that towards some good, so put in some of these provisions. So, I'm very supportive of this. Want to give credit also, I think, I know we were also very inspired by City of Bellevue that passed a very similar ordinance and kudos to former Councilmember Jeremy Barksdale, who I know led on that effort in Bellevue. And I know that some of, I believe that some of our ordinance is modeled off of what they had also passed, is that correct?
It is, and also, other cities like Kent and Burien have adopted this, so we're on the forefront of it within the Puget Sound region, but yeah, part of that was used as the model for this.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I would just note, I think, I've heard a lot of support from the community, especially from labor unions in support of this because they do want to see more opportunities for people to be able to get into good middle wage jobs. I would say it would be great if we could reach out to those involved in labor before we finalize this. I had flagged it for a few folks and I think they had a question around the 15%. I can follow up with that question, but just to make sure that it's aligned with those who actually would be helping to facilitate those apprenticeships.
So, Councilmember, that 15% standard is the state standard and in our discussions with labor, when we were originally crafting this, they were supportive of that, but however you would like to have that conversation.
Sounds good. But overall, I'm happy to move this to consent and can follow up with any final questions. Just want to make sure that we do that final engagement with those who would be partners in implementing this.
Councilmember Salhoudi.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Council President Kritzer mentioned. You know, I've heard a lot of support for moving this forward from labor unions and labor representatives and my question does tie into what Council Vice President Forsyth was bringing up on that million dollar threshold and just, you know, understanding how we got to that number, not saying, you know, pro or against that number, but just what is that value, what does that mean? Could it be 999,000? Is there, you know, a specificity to that? And then, is there a gauge of what neighboring cities, Bellevue, Kent or other cities that have passed this, what value they're at in terms of implementation?
Yeah, Councilmember, all the other cities have the same thresholds that we do and in the enabling legislation that was passed by the state, as I mentioned, it originally had the $2 million threshold with a sliding scale down to a million after a couple of years. So, the other cities have adopted that as well, so we're all uniform across the Puget Sound region for right now. Yep.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Director Burke, with the threshold, because we've got questions about money, with the question around the threshold, is there baked into it any allowance for inflation, cost of goods, competitive bidding, so that we're not seeing unexpected costs later on that would cause that threshold of a million dollars or whatever it ends up being to be obsolete and then needing to make an amendment sooner than we expected?
No, the $1 million acts as a, basically as a floor for any of the contracts. So, the provisions of the ordinance do not kick in unless the project is over a million dollars, you know, fully loaded. So, on the construction aspect, the contingency and sales tax and other components. So, I don't see us needing any additional language on that. Most of our projects will not come in at exactly $1 million or 999,000. So, I'm pretty positive that when this provision will kick in, we won't have any issues like that.
Thank you. So, Director Burke, I'm, because I need to move us along for time, I'm wondering, is this something, is there a timeliness to this that we need at this month or could we take another round at it with the council members who might have additional follow-up for you?
It's up to you, Councilmember Stewart. We are heading into our construction season, so the longer that we delay to get the provisions in place, begin to change our standard contracts that has this language, there could be an impact on that, but however you want to pursue this.
Okay. So, now I'll turn to the question. I do see your hand, Councilmember Forsyth. Do you have an objection to this item going to consent and having a chance to continue to ask some questions in the interim?
I do not have an objection to that. I had one, but just quick follow-up from a question that didn't get answered earlier.
Sure. Could I, okay, could I ask you to take it offline?
I think it's very pertinent to the conversation right now.
Okay, great. Councilmember Forsyth, go ahead. You may not get an answer in this moment just for time.
Just for clarity, Director Burke, I'm seeing on Article Six that the city council would approve if there is a waiver to be placed by a construction company. The city council would have to approve that, is that correct? And it sounds like you might need to follow up with me on that.
I will. I don't have the ordinance up in front of me, but I can take a look at that and respond back to the council as a whole.
That would be great. And yeah, I want to keep us moving forward on this. I think it's important to get this in place before the construction season, so that my vote would be, let's keep it moving and we can pull and talk about it if we need to.
I really appreciate that. Thank you, Council Vice President Forsyth. Are there any council members who object to this item going to consent then? Okay, if you've got questions, have those conversations in the interim. I appreciate that, team. Director Burke, I'm gonna give you a break and this body is going to go back to item number one on our agenda. And I do want to acknowledge Madam Mayor Bernie has been patiently waiting in the wings. Thank you so much. Director Burke, we'll see you in just a couple minutes. Item number one on our agenda today is the appointment of the board members to Cascade Water Alliance. Mayor Bernie, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much for delaying my time up here, I appreciate it. So, I have put forward appointments to the Cascade Water Alliance along with other appointments. So, for Cascade Water Alliance, I would stay the member and Councilmember Nueva Camina would be the alternate. And I know there have been some questions on this, so I just want to share a little bit about the work I've done with Cascade and hope to continue to do. So, since I've been part of the City of Redmond elected officials, I've been on Cascade of Water Alliance. Initially, I was the alternate and then I was moved to member probably a couple of years into my term on council. And since then, I've actually been part of the Executive Board of Cascade Water Alliance as well. I've been running the Public Affairs Committee for the last probably six years, been the vice chair, as well as when I was first started with Secretary Treasurer, been highly involved in all of Cascade Water Alliance. It's actually one of our number one priorities as a city to have clean drinking water now and into the future. Cascade Water Alliance, as you all should know, because you get monthly updates, is an integral part of our water supply. We do negotiations with other entities to ensure we have water supply in the future. And right now, we're at a critical point where we're doing negotiations with Tacoma and Seattle to figure out where we're going to get the rest of our water into the years to come and whether or not we need to develop lake taps. Part of this is pretty significant meetings during the day as well as into our regular Cascade meetings. I've been a part of those things, integral member of all of the decision-making with Cascade for the last many years. Really excited about the work. It goes in part to my background of biology and water resource management and then also into the work that I do as a city to ensure that our rates and our water work for everyone now and into the future. These decisions that we're making are extremely important. It's important to have someone on there who's very focused on ensuring clean water, ensuring supply and making sure our ratepayers pay appropriate rates to ensure that clean water. And that's why I would hope to continue on this as well.
Great. So, Mayor Bernie, we have this potentially slated for consent on February 20th. Questions or comments from the council? Okay. Any objection to this item going to consent on the 20th? Wonderful. Thank you for being with us, Mayor Bernie.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. We are going to turn our attention back to item number nine on our agenda today, which is the budget increase for the Redmond Senior and Community Center of $3.7 million for a total project budget of $61,700. With us, we have Public Works Director Erin Burt, welcome back, and Eric Dawson. It's great to see you again. It's been a while, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. We're in our home stretch on Redmond Senior and Community Center. You can see the building taking shape behind us. I think some of you have been on a tour of the insides as well and it's, once completed, it's gonna be an absolutely fantastic statement piece for the City of Redmond. With that though, we are here asking for an additional, some additional budget authorization and allocation. As this project has progressed in the challenging construction environment that we found ourselves in, costs have increased, the project duration due to some equipment delays and other issues that impacts that we felt, found during COVID, has driven up our final costs to get this project to completion, to include additional consultant city staff time that have been required to address these changes. As we're all well aware of actually for this project, because when it went out to bid and then came to fruition during construction, the challenging marketing, market conditions that we found during the initial couple of years of COVID actually really did impact this project, mostly from the fact of the increased cost of material, the lack of labor and then also the COVID supply disruptions that impacted many different segments of the market. Further, the impact on this and asking for some additional funds is that when, because of the challenges that we knew we were going to face, this project did go out to bid at 50% design. And sometimes when you put something out at 50% design and when it comes back at 100%, you're gonna have some changes to the original design, which are gonna have some cumulative effects that you have to go back and change, which increases costs across the board. When you get into construction, any sort of complicated building, and we do have some complicated... and we do have some complicated aspects of this project, you deal with change orders. Anytime you're looking at access, you go and you put in an electrical system and somebody realizes, hey, actually, we didn't put enough power outlets to power outside events. That has additional costs that, that drive this that we need to cover. We've been very prudent and focused on this project and looking to maintain the budget in a very reasonable and controlled manner. But we are at this point where we have commitments that we need to make in order to bring the project into completion that we do need additional funds for. In the budget, excuse me, in the council packet that was provided, we're looking for additional funds in four main areas. One is adding $1.4 million to our contingency pot. That's basically to cover increased change orders that we foresee coming, dealing with the civil and structural issues of the building, mechanical and electrical, and then also finishes and hardware for the building. We do have to pay our contractor for delays. It's within our contract. The contractor overhead dollars that are allocated to pay for their operations is about $7,500 a day. We have determined that we're going to have 133 added days to this contract. That dollar amount has been negotiated down in agreement as it relates to what were the delays actually that fell on our shoulders and what were the delays that fell on the contractor's shoulders. Additionally, as these things happen, we're not proud of this aspect, but we did have an accounting error on this project. We were originally tracking sales tax in the amount of $700,000. But when we went through a reconciliation process a few months ago, we realized that that $700,000 of sales tax was not carried over into our current project budget. So we need to pay the state. So that costs us $700,000. And then also with the scheduling delay, we will have some increased costs, not only to the city, for our city staff, but then also the various prime and sub consultants that we have on board. So that's a broad overview. I do have Eric with us and we're happy to field any questions. If you want to go into finite detail on how many new electrical plugs we've put in or how much the door hardware was to put in door plates for automatic door opening, we're happy to go into that detail. But whatever questions you may have, we're here to answer them.
Okay. Thank you for being with us. Councilmembers, who would like to kick us off? Councilmember Fields, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. I don't know about kicking off, but so I, I'm just, I'm not even sure there's a question here, Director Burke. I think it's more of a comment. The, the schedule change was known for some time. I brought this issue of, I've never, I think my words were, I've never seen a project that has expanded in schedule that didn't expand in budget in quite some time. And so I guess my disappointment here is that we didn't address this earlier so that the council would have been not at the last minute making a 6% budget decision. And one of the things that I kept trying to put on the table was where were our options? Did we have any scope options? Did we have anything that we could have done to trade for budget? And my other question, I think you just answered, was since our vendors have known about this schedule increase for quite a while, when did they put their bids in? And how much of it, I'm not going to go into the details of it, but I am concerned that we didn't give ourselves time to address this and be able to parse out how much of this is in fact City of Redmond's schedule extension causes and how much of it is something that was in the scope of work. So yes, I'm pontificating. No, I don't have a question. What I would like to say is that in the future, I would hope that you would be more proactive in when you know that there's a schedule change, that you then address the budget change and let council deal with it at that time.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer.
I would agree with my colleague that I think one of my, the biggest things that jumped out for me was that it seems like we probably saw these costs increased and the council wasn't informed of this sooner. And I would also request that in the future, when we have a project this big, I mean, for a while, as Mr. Dawson knows, we were getting updates on this every single time. It was actually at the Parks and Sustainability Committee at the time, but it was probably almost two years we were hearing about it every single month. And as this has been, been built, it, it would have been great to be able to know, especially after we had the delays, you know, what we were anticipating so that we could be looped in as leadership on these decisions. You know, as it is, obviously, we're all really excited for this project, want to see it done and are just so excited to be able to, to cut the ribbon on it later this year. So, and, and we're kind of in it now. One question I have about the contingency, because I remember last time when we raised the budget, we looked at the contingency as that flex. And now we're looking to raise the contingency more specifically to be able to look at, at some, some increases. I'm wondering why we put that in contingency versus line items of the, the budget items that, that they're related to? Because it seems to me like contingency should be that buffer for us rather than specific types of costs.
It's, a part of it is just what we're calling it. And it's just a, you know, it's a language jargon type of thing. So I, some of the, most of these changes that you're seeing are things that we have been tracking. We've, we've seen them coming along on the project. We're starting to develop fixes, design changes for these. And so it's not something that's unknown to us, like you would typically think of a contingency. But as we, we have a single line item contract with this contractor. It's essentially about $44 million to build this building. So there's less of an opportunity to put it into line items that you might see on a lot of our other public work contracts where we have a line for paving and we have a line for, you know, for sidewalk, where we can incorporate that in. So really, change orders is our only way to add to the contract. And so for consistency with how we've talked to you about this before, we're calling them contingencies today, but really it's, it's change orders.
Thanks for that detail. One other question, then I'll open it up to others. I do have another one after that. But one is just on the project information sheet. The sheet that we got, I think, most was related to, was last updated when we did the $10 million update. It doesn't include this information, so it would be helpful. In particular, some of the funding sources aren't included there, like the state funding we got and some other philanthropic funding, I believe, isn't in there. So it would be helpful, and in particular for this $3.7 million, I would like to see before we make the decision just how we're planning to fund it. What are the, the sources?
Yeah. So the, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that in my opening comments. The, what we're proposing is $3.7 million from REIT fund balance on this as the funding source. That's been validated and verified by finance that those dollars are available for this.
Great. If you can provide that in writing and just give us the updated project sheet before we would make a decision on that, that would be my request.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth and then Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just agree with my fellow council members that spoke before me about timeline and us seeing this. Thank you for the clarification on REIT. I was looking at the memo and it wasn't quite clear on that. I guess I'll just, since everything has pretty much been said, I'll just add my own two cents that, boy, am I really glad we pushed to get that council manic bond to go out early. I think the amount of money that we saved from the APRs going up is probably in the ballpark of $3.7 million. So good on us for pushing so hard on that and trying to be responsible with our dollars and that council manic bonding when we did it. Really excited to get this project open. Understand that these, these things happen and these changes need to happen for us to get across the finish line. But I guess there's more communication earlier in the process. I understand GCCM. I know how that, that sometimes this is just how it goes. But yeah, just keeping us in the loop earlier is, is great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you. Appreciate the conversation as well. These are a little bit more detailed questions as per usual. The first one is, are we sure it's a materials availability question versus the work just taking longer, given that we've broken down the phases to expedite the process? Just wanted to clarify that.
It, it has been aspects of material. You know, for example, one of the biggest issues we faced was getting our electrical switchgear. And this goes back to the issues about why wasn't this information brought forward further? And I appreciate the statements from the council members on that. But we had made some original assumptions on when that equipment would arrive. As we built the schedule around when that equipment would arrive, it kept slipping. We're working with the suppliers and it, it ended up putting us into a position where we had to renegotiate some aspects of that equipment or looking at alternatives, could we get the equipment elsewhere? So that kept us from coming back and saying, here's a revised schedule. These are going to be the revised costs until we've had it and we had an opportunity to work through some of those components. So for the most part, it has been the aspects of the, the materials and getting our hands on it.
And then basically reorganizing when the work would get done?
We have to shift the schedule based on, so much is predicated on phasing in critical systems.
Right. Great. So that was, that was based on the, the phasing was supposed to help us get through more of that faster and then the contingent. We couldn't predict when we would get the stuff.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. And then could you remind me or even to check back with this? Did our initial contract contain provisions for cost of delay not to be borne by the city?
You got that?
It depends on the delay. And so in the case of material procurement for something that we have, we have specified, if it, if that is delayed further than what was anticipated at the time of the contract, then that is our responsibility.
Okay. That makes sense. So something we wanted, but we couldn't get until later?
Yeah. If the contractor said, you know, I'm going to get it on day one and I'm going to have it installed by day 30, and it act, they get it on day one and it takes 60 days, those, that cost is theirs. But if, hey, what you asked for isn't available on day one, it's not available until day 30, then we bear that cost.
Right. Great. Thanks. And then number three of four, so one more after this. Will additional money get this project done sooner?
No. We're, we're on a glide path for substantial completion next month or early in April with opening in May.
Okay. So this is like a closeout adjustment that you need to do the work. Perfect. And then lastly, this is our, just especially for the new council members, is this our first GCCM project? And are we doing a documentation of, collection of lessons learned?
Absolutely.
Okay. Fantastic. Did the phasing help us or no? I guess that would be my, my big question.
We'll look forward to having that conversation once we close it out and do the after-action review.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other council members for the first round? I see Councilmember Kritzer is going to start off the second round, but Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, around the, the clarification for us. If this is the first, if we're taking notes. What I understand about a lot of things in life, it is what it is and it ain't what it ain't. And there, it is what it is at this point. The thing that I, I had heard that we may be able to, to change moving forward easily is with the accounting error, that was $700,000. Have we identified what it was? And have we put something in place to make sure that it doesn't happen again?
Yes. It was a transcription error. That, that's all it was. There was an original project budget that was held in finance. And when we developed the project budget controlled by the project manager, it was just something that didn't get transferred over until we went back and did a project reconciliation, which is a part of our process that we do, especially on a project this big. And the error was found.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and hop in with my comments and a question for Director Cochran, if she's available. I echo the sentiment of my colleagues. I understand that things get more expensive. I don't understand the breakdowns in communication. Council hasn't discussed this project for a long time. And in fact, last we heard, it was just great. Things were going great. So it's, it's, it's an unfair surprise. We've said that the, the additional $3.7 million would be fulfilled with REIT funds. Director Burke, you said you're, it's been verified that it's there, but council actually hasn't had an opportunity to hear about the health of the REIT funds. And there is an opportunity cost there. When we use 3.7 of those dollars to finish this project, it won't be available for the next project. So Director Cochran, I wonder if you could just share with us a little bit about the state of those, those funds more broadly?
I'm happy to. The $3.7 million is coming from the REIT fund balance. It is funds that were collected at the end of 2022. We had a few months that were much higher in activity than expected. And so those are sitting unallocated in the REIT fund. The REIT fund itself in 2023 slowed down a, a bit. During the fall, we saw a little bit of a jump and it did end the year a little bit weaker than normal. I did receive REIT information for the month of January. It is the highest amount that we have received. It is not a huge amount. It's $450,000, but it is much higher than normal. The fund itself is healthy. We are, you know, anticipating that it meets its targets. No, no concerns from me.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Kritzer.
Well, I will say, other council members asked, asked my question. But follow-up I will, since I'm called on, on the REIT funds. I would love to have a little bit more information of the exact dollar amounts that, that are available in our REIT funds so that we know what percentage we're, we're planning to use for this project. Thanks.
Right now, in the REIT fund, we have, and I'll double-check the figures for you, but it's over $23 million. And part of it, we are holding for the MOC project. The majority of it will go there. So we're good.
Councilmember Sal Houdin.
Yeah, thank you so much. Again, I, it's already been said. Just want to express what the rest of the council has mentioned. And I know you mentioned in the beginning of the meet, of this agenda item that you could break down sort of those contingencies, what's going in. I mean, where each of those hand-wave door openers are. If you do have that broken out, I'd love to see that and just, not necessarily that item, but just what's going into these contingencies.
Yeah, absolutely. We can provide that to council.
Mr. Dawson, did you have something to add? Oh, okay. Mr. Fields.
Thanks. Yeah, just to sort of underscore, amplify this impact on the REIT fund. I appreciate all the information that we were just giving both by Director Burke and Director Cochran. When you're doing this analysis and you provide, and you're bringing back a summary for the council, I think it would be helpful and fair to see which projects are potentially impacted by the using of these funds. I hear what you're saying, that it's unallocated. But we do in fact do six-year CIP plans. And I know that the MOC is a really huge, huge, gigantic issue, maybe even bigger than the Senior Center in its import and its size and its urgency. So I would really like to know not just the numbers and the spreadsheets, but what the analysis tells us may be the programmatic or project impacts of the $3.7 million not being available for what we'd hoped it would be available for.
We will be able to share that information with you in June. When we go over the CIPs, we'll share with you the projects that were proposed but didn't move funding, move forward. And we'll be able to explain if it's due to funding or capacity or other issues. Happy to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? Okay. We are over time, but just by a smidge, all things considered. What I'm going to actually do is request that this item be put on new business. I think that there is I think that there is some important information on the REIT fund balance for us to physically see in our inboxes. I'm getting a thumbs up from Council Force, Councilmember Forsyth, Council Vice President Forsyth, and some head nods around the room. So I think we'll put this on new business for the 20th. That way, we can have one last conversation and a chance to weigh in. Obviously, I will just add my personal support and enthusiasm. We are opening this thing in 90 days, and Eric, there's nobody's hand I want to shake more than yours on that day. So again, it's, it's going to be a wonderful thing, but we just need to do our diligence on this piece. Okay. For the good of the order, some of the council's going to be in Olympia the next couple of days for AWC days. If you are planning to come and thank the Public Works team, we've got lunch tomorrow out at the MOC, starting at 11:30, for those who are planning to join me in doing that.
Build your own nacho bar.
If that doesn't entice you.
Who doesn't like nachos?
Don't know what you'll be eating in Olympia, but the rest of us will be having nachos. Wonderful. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.